UbaSutter dot live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at PlumasLakeSelfStorage.com.
Five nine seven, five nine nine. County Departments, five nine four, five nine seven, five nine nine. Anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda of removing those three items. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda-
Motion of second. All this is favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Second.
Motion of second. All this is favor?
Aye.
Measure passes. All right. Consent agenda, all matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. You already say that. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. You lost it. Already say that. All right. Now that we blew that one. Special presentation. All right. We present a proclamation to Deputy Sheriff Daniel Harris honoring his years of service. Present a proclamation to Deputy Sheriff Daniel Harris honoring his years of service. We're gonna present to Michelle, and we're gonna present to Michelle Mesrol honoring her years of service. In 2000, Daniel was promoted to Deputy Sheriff and assigned to operations divisions. And whereas Daniel has served as an active member of the search and rescue team since 1997, 2012, he was assigned to the Marine Enforcement Division and shoulder the responsibility of technical rescue operator. And whereas in August of 2005, he was awarded the Bronze Medal of Merit for the rescue of six people, two adults, four children, when the wrath they had gone over went to Gear Point Dam and became trapped. As a member of the technical rescue team, he displayed teamwork, determination, and thoroughness, which resulted in a successful rescue. Whereas on August 1st, 2017, while on his way to boat patrol assignment, he responded to assist in a disturbance call near Oregon House. Upon arriving the scene, he immediately responded to the sound of gunfire and entered the residence at great personal risk. Polo shirt? Armor? Yeah. Took guts. Okay. Not knowing the location, at first, he ensured the civilians on scene were safe and then located his partners inside. Not knowing the location of the status of the suspect, Deputy Harris pulled Deputy Everhart and then Deputy Bronson to safety. He requested assistance, provided valuable updates, and initiated first aid. Deputy Harris's selfless actions were nothing short of heroic. He was recognized in the 2017 Peace Officer of the Year and awarded the Governor's Distinguished Gold Medal of Valor for his actions. And whereas Daniel's passion for the safety of our citizens, those visiting our back country and waterways, it's evident in the boating safety classes, numerous community events, and technical training he has provided. His tenured involvement with search and rescue in our Marine Enforcement Division has ensured the safety and welfare of the ease of those enjoying Uba County's vast outdoor recreational activities. Now there were four led to be proclaimed, the Uba County Board of Supervisors hereby commends Deputy Sheriff Daniel Harris for 28 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Uba County, and wish him a happy and well-deserved retirement. He can pretty much do what he wants. All right. All right. Okay. Thank you very much. County Uba Board of Supervisor proclamation honoring Health and Human Services Program Manager Michelle Mesrol. Oops. Michelle, where are you at? Oh, sorry about that. Great. Whereas Michelle Mesrol, I'll learn to pronounce it without the long E on there, was born in Uba City and raised in Marysville and has been a lifelong resident and advocate of all things in Uba County. She was educated exclusively in Uba County, including Walter Conick, Conick, McKinney, Marysville High School, High School and Uba College, and continues to be one of the most vigorous champions of Marysville and Uba County. And whereas Michelle's initial foray into public service included working for the Honorable G. Dave Tej and at Casa Esperanza, in 1991, she was hired by the County of Uba as a food stamp intake worker. This was a far cry from her dream job of control room operator at juvenile hall. Michelle, let's see. Michelle quickly realized human services work was for her calling and was trained in every area available, eventually earning a bright yellow badge with the title generic worker. Okay. She earned many more promotions after that, moving through the ranks as a trainer, fair hearings officer, program specialist, analyst, and program manager. For Michelle, every job always has been the best job. And whereas of Michelle's accomplishments, she is most proud of the creation and development of the communications and engagement team. Under her leadership, this team has thrust the Health and Human Services Department, social media use, brand compliance, and outreach efforts into the 21st century. And whereas Michelle has a bucket list of her retirement plans to start on, a list longer than can be duplicated here, and the items prioritized, at the top will always be the ones involving her family. Her granddaughter, Masik, Macy, I'll get it right someday, born on 2/22, will likely take up much, most of her time. Her better half, Frank, daughter Alexandria, and son-in-law, Justin, will likely take up the rest. If she's lucky, there will be a few spare moments for RVing and digging up diamonds in Arkansas. That's unusual. Whereas now, the end is here, and she must face the final curtain. That sounds rather... But my friend, she'll make it clear, and state her case of which she's certain. She lived a life that's full. She traveled each and every highway, and more and much more. She did it her way. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Uba County Board of Supervisors hereby commends Program Manager Michelle Mesrol for her 32 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Uba County, and wishes her a happy and well-earned retirement. A friendly board today. Miss you. After 32 years? Wow. Would you like to say a few words? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Public communication.
Any person may speak about any subject of concern, provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of 15 minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Please note, no board action can be taken on comments made under this heading. And through the chair, we have two requests to speak cards.
Okay, first one.
Tony Farley.
We're gonna have to print you on the agenda, Tony.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Tony Farley from South Sur County, South New Street. Here to thank everyone for their service. Thank you, Kevin, the county administrator for his service. Thank you, county council, the Super Wonder Lawyer. Thank you, Chair Andy Vasquez, former Marine and former Reserve Officer, a veteran. Thank you, John Misk, District 5. Thank you, Gary Barford, District 4. Thank you, Seth, District 2, and Dan Blazer, District 1. And thank you, the sheriff, and also Rachel. Thank you, Rachel. Thank you, the sheriff and the other sheriff. Thank you for your service.
All right.
Tom McQuarter.
Tom McQuarter. Good morning. My name's, is it on? Test. My name's Tom McQuarter. I live in Olive Forest, and just want to say good morning. And before I get into the meat of my talk here, I just want to say thank you to the county council administrator. I know a lot of times, the supervisors get to talk to constituents, but occasionally, we interact as well. And thank you for your hard work and dedication to keep them on straight and narrow in most cases. So, but basically, I just wanted to kind of give you guys an update on the Linda Post 807, American Legion. Recently, I think four or five weeks ago, we had a new commander, Cindy Verrill, installed as the post commander. I recently became the Sergeant at Arms. And just wanted to know, let you know that while we did have kind of a lull in operations, we are back in full swing. Wednesdays is Taco Wednesdays, 6 o'clock. Come on down. And then on every Friday night, we serve a meal. But this Friday is especially important because the first party, any veteran who is a member and shows up, it's a free dinner. And so, but we're having chicken fried steak this Friday. So please come on down and support the post. I know we have, you know, we only got 168 hours a week, 189 things to do. Maybe once a year, you know, come on down and see how we're doing. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom. All right. Trying to think. My case has terminal. All right. County Departments, 571.
If I could, through the chair, you pulled items 594, 597, and 599.
Okay, you want to do it first?
Would you like to do those as one group? They're all somewhat related.
Sure. All right. We can do those as one group.
Donna, would you like to? Do you want to take those three items?
Yes.
3, 4, 5, 7, 1?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning. And these items are being brought by the board. And I do want to make a note that one of the items, the Wheatland High Bond Measure, has not yet been filed with our office. So the two of the three jurisdictions, Marysville Joint and Plumas Lake Elementary, they have filed and are requesting consolidation with the March primary.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here, Donna.
Sure.
The reason I put all three of those items on there is I want to open this up for the board for discussion on bonds for school districts and what their concerns are with the spending of the money of the bonds, because there's been no meetings to the public that we know of that lays out why a department, let's see, the Marysville Joint Unified School District got $21 million in 2021 property taxes. 2022, $23 million. 2023, $26 million. And I understand this is just to put this bond measure on there and that there'll be discussions, but I would like the board to voice their opinion about what they would like to see explained to the public, because we have the public asking us, why does, why do the school systems need all this money? Why aren't they functionally able to educate people? Our reading scores and our math scores are dismal. We're 45th in the nation. We're the most populous state. And I would like, if at all possible, if you'd like to comment, any of the board on what questions you might have on this. The thing, you brought this up, is the quote by the Secretary of Education of the United States. He forgot a few words on this quote of Ronald Reagan. He said, "We're with the government. We're here to help." And he forgot the first five words, which is the nine most feared words in America are, "I'm with the government and I'm here to help." John Messick has a number of questions that I asked him if he could talk about. Maybe we can start with you, John.
I didn't really have so many questions as comments. Just mainly, they're just asking to put this on the ballot, correct?
Correct.
But I do, Andy, I do think they had school board meetings. I know they had at least one where they talked about that. But my comment to my representative of the school board was, I just felt it would be better for them to say exactly what they're going to do with the money, rather than just a giant bond for a bunch of stuff like that. But as far as putting it on the ballot, I think it's just like anybody running for an election. Put it on there, and they have to do their own campaign.
Well, the thing about the bond that bothers me is that the increase in dollar amounts to the school systems, no accounting whatsoever, and no accounting for putting out children that are 54th in the nation, or 54th, 45th, I'm sorry, dyslexic here. But Plumas Lake Elementary, just for grins and giggles, gets $1.2 million in 2021, $1.4 in 2021, 22, and 22, 23, $1.8 million. Wheatland in 22, 23 gets $3,486,000 of your property tax money. Okay? And Wheatland gets $1.6 million. Campdeville Elementary gets $345,000 of your tax money. All right. Uba County Office of Education, $4.6 million. Schools as a whole, from 2009, 2000, 2019, the growth in students in public schools was 7.4 percent, and teachers was 8.7 percent. District administrators, 87.6 percent. Seems a little lopsided to me. And nobody wants to question that. Well, I'm here questioning and I'm asking the board members if they have any other comments. Seth, would you have any questions or comments?
Yeah. Fall Azroni actually invited me to a presentation where they talked about the different facilities that they were looking to do. I spoke with Chong Yang, actually this weekend. He's a school board member. When I was looking through the agenda, I did see that two of the members of the school board had voted against it. I think it was Steeman and Mr. Credle. So I know that there is some division to it. But I think for our purposes, the only thing we're doing is putting it out there for the voters to decide. So I don't know that muzzling the school by not pushing it forward and letting them convince the voters through their various town halls. So I look forward to maybe having another town hall with Fall in our area. Maybe Chong will come and speak. They can explain what the benefits are. You're absolutely right in that they want to see certain things built. I think one of the things that's going to be built from this bond measure is a middle school in our area. But it is obviously open-ended. So I look forward to hearing more discussion on it, and we'll see what happens.
Okay. Don, do you have anything you want to say?
Yes. Well, they definitely need to make their case. We are one of the fastest-growing counties, I think, in the state, which means a lot of houses, which mean a lot of people, means a lot of kids. So there's a pretty good argument that they can make, but they definitely need to make the case because there's a lot of questions by the public. But, you know, we need to get it on the ballot and let the school districts make their case.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and allow us to vote on these three. But I'd like to say that if our National Secretary of the Education is any example of what our school system is turning out, it's a disaster. And I would like for the school board to actually come before the board and explain what they want to do with that money. I just...
If I could just, it sounds to me like a part of the kind of question here is informing the voters. And just to share with you, as part of the election process, what will be included in every voter guide that goes to every voter eligible to vote on each of those measures, the applicable. They will get a copy of the full text of the measure. They will get a copy of the impartial analysis, which will be written by our county council. They will also have a tax rate statement, which summarizes that information. And then there is the opportunity to file arguments for or against a measure. And that opportunity is now through December 15.
All right.
That information will be provided to them.
My only hope was, this has always been a smoke and mirrors by the education system, and hopefully, we can shine some light on what our local systems. There's no reason that we can't improve our own system. We don't have to follow the sheeple off the cliff. So...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just wanted to explain a little bit of what is on the agenda today.
Sure.
Essentially, there's two options for the school districts here. If the board determines that we won't consolidate the election, they will have to have their own election, which they'll pay for in full. If we consolidate the election, then they'll be responsible for paying part of the county's election costs. So even if the board doesn't approve this, it doesn't prevent the measure from going through to the voters. It will just be at their sole expense and not sharing in the county's cost.
Okay. Well, I'd like to bring it back before the board. Can we do all three at one time, or do we want to do them separately?
We can do all three at one time, since we were gonna put on the consent, right?
Well, they're no longer on the consent agenda, and they're separately itemized, so they need to be handled one at a time.
All right. Public comment. Anybody? Tom, thank you.
As our county council, Tom McQuarter, as our county council mentioned, this basically, we really can't stop them. We can just stop them from consolidating it with our election. However, John did bring up a good subject that I haven't attended any of these board meetings due to conflict interest I want to avoid. But it does seem to be that, as you mentioned, smoke and mirrors, right now, the residents of Uba County are paying on three bonds for the Uba Community College District, three bonds. And right now, you cannot go over there and have them open the books up and show you exactly what they spent that money on. The campus looks just like it did five years ago, prior to these bonds being voted on and passed. Yet, Woodland has a $1.9 million soccer facility, courtesy of this Community College District and our bonds. And there's a $39 million facility down there for culinary arts, courtesy. And yet, our campus here, which basically the college district is based named after, it looks like it did five years ago. And so as far as whenever this does get on the ballot, I would hope and encourage that people make sure that there is a set of books. And as Seth mentioned, that it can't just be spent willy-nilly. It has, build a shopping list. Tell us, you know, this new building's gonna cost us $10 million. Okay, we'll pay, we'll pay for $10 million. We're not gonna just give you $15 million, and you have five extra to play with later. So anyway, that's all I want to say. Just make sure we can see the public, can see what this money is being spent on. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom.
Through the chair, a question for Donna. You said that Wheatland hasn't filed their stuff. Can we still approve it to go on the ballot in anticipation of them bringing you what they need?
Unless council disagrees, my understanding is that those are two separate filings. They file with the county, asking the board to order consolidation with the election, then they also are required to file with us. So that filing is absolutely necessary to happen. But I don't, it's not my understanding that they have to happen at the same time.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. Ultimately, this item is the approval of the board to consolidate. They have filing dates for the filings that they have to file with elections. If they miss those dates, they ultimately wouldn't be on. They would have been approved to have consolidated, but the missing of those filing dates would not allow them to go on to the election.
Okay. Right, Mr. Everly. I used your figures.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Everly, auditor and controller. I had an opportunity to read these resolutions, and just want to take a couple of minutes to just offer some information. I appreciate Supervisor Messick's comments about the description of the projects that are gonna be going on. In reviewing all the items that were proposed in these resolutions, I think all but one of those bond proposals has a specific list, a punch list of items that each of those entities want to, each of the schools want to construct. And I think that's really helpful for the voters to make those decisions. My only, my only concern is that there's, it's Marysville, Plumas Lake, and Wheatland are issuing multiple bonds for the same purpose. My only question is, why are they not issuing all the same bonds, all one issuance instead of three or multiple issuances? I think Plumas Lake has three, Wheatland has two. I'm not sure why they're doing those separately, but it seems odd that they're doing that. There's additional administrative costs for each one of those bonds, but I'm not sure why they would spend the extra money. So I don't know if that's any concern necessarily of ours, but are the voters absolutely... So I don't know if that's any concern necessarily of ours, but if the voters absolutely might be. So I just put that information out there. And finally, with respect to, I know, Mr. Chairman, you've asked a couple of times about the property tax money that was received by the school districts, and they use, they could use those things for the construction. And I think it's, because of the way the schools are funded, they have a lot of money, but they don't necessarily have, the money can't be used for any discretionary purpose that they choose, similar to what the counties, us as a county deal with. Our budget is, our proposed budget for, sorry, our approved budget for 23, 24 is about 320 million dollars. Only about 20 million of that comes from taxes. So to restrict us to only doing new projects based on the money we get from property taxes is kind of, it limits our ability to do things. The schools are in the same boat. They don't have necessarily the ability to save up a whole lot of money over time, and so these bonds are necessary to address the growth that Supervisor Blazer talked about. So I just wanted to make sure we put that into perspective as we have that conversation.
I have another question, a question for you. Is there any chance that we could find out what outstanding bonds are currently, school bonds that we pay tax?
I think Mr. McCord talked about the three bonds that are outstanding for Yuba College. I think, believe there's two or three bonds are still outstanding for Marysville Joint. Wheatland High School has two bonds that are outstanding as well.
Would that be something that you could give the board, a list?
Absolutely. It's on your, for most of the citizens in county, it's on your tax bill as well.
Okay. Well, that's, you know, I mean...
Absolutely.
I'd like to have it in one spot.
I prefer that and send it to the board.
All right. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Any further comments from the public? All right, we'll go ahead with 594 and bring this before the board for a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, item 597. Did I say any opposed? Any opposed? No. Okay. All right, item two is 597.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, item number 599.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any questions from the public? All right. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Okay. See, 595. Clerk recorded. 571, I skipped one. Oh, County Department, sorry, sorry, sorry. 571.
Good morning.
Get lost.
Public Guardian Conservator. There is a recommendation for the board to adopt a resolution deferring implementing changes that were recently made to the Welfare and Institutions Code to January 1st, 2026. Some background, the LPS Act provides evaluation and treatment of people or individuals who are gravely disabled and unable to provide for their food, shelter, or clothing due to a mental health disorder. Recently, in October, or October 10th, 2023, Governor Newsom signed a bill that expanded the definition of grave disability to include involuntary detention of, and referrals for conservatorship for individuals based on severe and standalone substance use disorders. Excuse me. It also expanded the definition of grave disability to include individuals who are unable to provide for their basic personal need for safety and necessary medical care. Necessary medical care is to mean that care that is provided by a licensed healthcare practitioner to determine the necessary needs to prevent serious deterioration of an existing medical condition that is likely to result in serious bodily injury if left This would also be modifying standards for conservatorship proceedings without requiring person cross-examination, and this would also require counties to consider least restrictive alternatives such as assisted outpatient as well as care court and conducting conservatorship investigations. And care court, I believe, is, we are implementing in December of 2023, 2024, sorry. So SB 43 also expands, like, reporting requirements that align with the new criteria, which does delay implementing the change until January 1st, 2026, through a county adoption of a county board resolution. Currently, the Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health provides mandated LPS services to both Sutter and Yuba Counties. Yuba County Public Guardian provides the conservatorship services to individuals that have the mental health disorder, who are Yuba County residents. These, so in order to implement the expansion of the, changing the definition of grave disability, counties will need to develop new policies, procedures, work enforcement, and treatment capacity in order to implement SB 43 effectively. You know, further analysis possibly is needed to understand the full scope of, and require guidance that in full support implementation. As of right now, SB 43 has not, does not come with any dedicated state funding. Counties will need additional time to arrange staffing, resources, and working with Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health in what services they will be able to provide with the expansion of SB 43. There's no fiscal impact, and the resolution, I believe, is attached.
Any questions from the board?
Maybe. How much flexibility do we have on pushing this out or ignoring it? So according to the state's charter on this, this bill is, this is the only opportunity at this point they're going to give us to push it out. It's mandatory, so we ultimately couldn't ignore it unless we want to implement at the earliest possible time. But the huge issue here, the infrastructure, the housing, the treatment facilities, although they signed the bill, they haven't even laid out how they're going to increase those. And at this time, placement facilities for the number of people found to be gravely disabled at this time are very difficult to find placements, let alone those that are going to exist with the expansion of the definition.
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, it's kind of typical of mandates or bills not considering consequences and not considering additional reporting and staffing and, I mean, it's, yeah, push it out as far as we can or eliminate it.
Okay. Any further questions? I have one. Do, you have to work together with Sutter County Mental Health?
Correct.
On this? And how's, how's that process working for you?
On this particular issue?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I believe that Sutter County is also taking it to their board to defer implementation. We haven't sat down and, you know, kind of rolled up our sleeves and discussed how we're going to...
Okay.
Charter the waters on this one.
Just wanted to ask. Any questions from the public on this issue? All right. We'll bring it back to the board for a motion?
Second.
All right, motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Measure passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now for the fun part, county administrator approved employment agreement with Tiffany Manuel.
Yes. Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Kevin Allen, county administrator. It's my pleasure to present this item this morning. By way of background...
Is Tiffany here?
Yes, yes.
There she's hiding.
And I wanted to point out, maybe you guys can all raise your hands, we have the HR team here. Oh, wow, we even have a little poster back there.
Very good.
And the reason why I wanted to point that out is, you know, you have a unified front, you know, pushing forward in a department, which creates great momentum there, right, to make progress, you know, positive progress for our organization. So it's, it's one of those where we had a departure of our former HR Director, Jill Abel, in July, and Tiffany was, was kind of thrust into, at the interim role as HR Director in July, which gave us an opportunity for both the organization and Tiffany to kind of see if this was a good fit, and it clearly is. And so it's my pleasure to present before the board this morning an employment agreement that would become effective December 1st, making her a permanent fixture. And our organization is HR Director, and the employment agreement, just so I'm checking the boxes, counsel, it's our standard format as far as employment agreements for at-will department head positions that lays out the salary, terms of severance, vehicle allowance, et cetera. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has, and I believe Tiffany, she has an opportunity to say a few words as well.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the board?
I just don't know why you give her three days to back out.
It's like buying a car, you get three days to turn it back in.
Yeah. My comment is that she's been a can-do person and solution-oriented, and she's very informing on everything that she does. She seems to cover all bases, and I really appreciate your hard work and effort and the willingness to step into the arena. Appreciate that. Do you have any, any comments from the public? Okay. Well, I think we saw the comments from the public, but Tiffany, you want to say a few words?
Or do you want to hear maybe the vote first, or?
You want a vote first? Oh, all right, sure. All right, we'll bring it, bring it to the board for approval.
Seth made a motion, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous here.
Thank you, Kevin, and I want to thank your board for your support. I've had the privilege of serving our county employees for the past 10 years and am honored and excited at the opportunity to continue to serve our employees and the community as HR Director. I have a wonderful, amazing team, you can see they're all here today, that I work alongside, and I'm excited and look forward to see what we can accomplish together. Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up. There you go. Ordinants in public hearings.
If you challenge in court the action or decision of the Yuba County Board of Supervisors regarding a zoning, planning, land use, or environmental protection matter made at any hearing described in this notice, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at such hearing, or in written correspondence delivered to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors at or prior to such hearing. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per individual or group.
Jeremy, I know you're in trouble with all those people leaving as you approach podium.
It's the best time to talk. Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Jeremy Strang with Community Development. The item for your board today is an ordinance that will add Chapter 2.41 to the Yuba County Ordinance Code. I don't have anything new today to add from what I gave you on the 14th, so my recommendation is, is that you waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance adding Chapter 2.41 to the Yuba County Ordinance Code, which creates the officer of the county hearing officer, office of the county hearing officer. It's always a mouthful.
All right. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Tom has his hand up.
Approach the podium so we can all hear.
For the first five minutes, but anyway, I was not here on the 14th, I didn't get a chance to watch the video. Just in a nutshell, would you please tell us what this office purpose and what they're going to do?
Yes, through the chair. The office will be staffed by attorneys that will hear local matters that are, are subject to either an appeal hearing or some other quasi-judicial capacity where the board has authorized through ordinance or resolution that the hearing officer be allowed to hear those matters.
Okay, thank you.
So move? Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Okay. Any comments from the public on this? Roll call, vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Purer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford is absent. Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, correspondence?
The board may direct any item of informational correspondence to a department head for appropriate action, and through the chair, we have one item on the agenda, 583-2023, United States Fish and Wildlife Office Notice Regarding 60-Day Public Comment Period on Draft Strategy to Manage Invasive Bard Owl.
Okay. Board Staff Member Reports. Mr.?
Good morning.
Yes, District One.
Are you ready?
Yes.
I just want to say a thank you to Saylove. They had their crew down there Saturday in the downtown area of Marysville doing cleanup. And it brings up a question for thought. In the years past, there were trustees on every Sunday would come down and do that cleanup. I know that whole demographic has changed, but I'd like to go back and see if we have any manpower to bring that program back into place. Thanks.
Okay. Looking for volunteers here.
Last weekend was nice. Saturday, I got to attend the Mong New Year Festival with Mr. Vasquez, and then I attended a luncheon on Sunday with that church, and it was just wonderful seeing the various things. I got a soul lock, so now I'm part of the tribe, I think. And then coming up, we have two parades, of course, one in Marysville on the 2nd and Olivehurst Parade on the 9th, which I'm sure that some of us have floats in that I'm very excited to see.
You also were there for the ribbon cutting.
I was also there for the Costco ribbon cutting, and we also had an Olivehurst tree lighting. I do too many things to remember them all.
I understand, understand. Mr. Rissler?
So I also attended the Costco ribbon cutting. I thought they did a very good job. They wouldn't let me do my 45-minute speech I prepared. They wanted to get everybody in the doors in a hurry. And that's about it. We're going to be at the, in the Christmas parade Saturday night, and I'm the designated driver for the board.
We're in trouble now. Okay, all right. Let's see, I attended the November 22 Costco ribbon cutting. It's, it was swamped. It was swamped. You know, you had to walk from the outer limits of the parking lot to get in there, and for the past three days that I've been there, it's been swamped, and it was really exciting. And I got to attend the Mong New Year, along with Supervisor Purer there, and even got to say a few words there about, and we're going to bring back the Mong History Month as soon as we find somebody who will participate with us. We hope to put together a committee later on about Yuba County forced drug administration procedures and questions on areas in behavioral health that we need to address, so that will be in a future meeting. But that's, that's about it for me. Any, any questions? County Council?
I'm in from our chairman. Just a couple of quick things, and I do want to underscore the item the Public Guardian presented, that that is a significant expansion of those that could potentially be served by our Public Guardian's office. And so that two-year delay is definitely necessary to plan out, not only how our county office will be able to handle that workload, but also, as County Council mentioned, that just the infrastructure and the therapists and just all of the other things that really weren't planned out by the state before the governor... weren't planned out by the state before the governor signed that bill into law and proclaimed that we should move forward. It's, I mean, it's a great cause, but there's a lot of planning and logistics that go along with, with that definition. So anyways, the Christmas parade, popular theme, I just wanted, I pinged the different departments. We have several different departments that'll be participating. I'll email over a list to the board, but you have Health and Human Service will be at both Marysville and Oliverhurst Parades. Along with the Yuba County Airport, we'll have an airport-themed float at both parades. Probation will be at the Marysville Parade Sheriff's Department, yep, at the parade. So that way, the board's aware of the other, you know, county departments that are participating. So you can walk more than once. See, if you're long enough, if you're far enough back in the queue, right, you can make it through and then come back and get your steps in. Go more than once. So, the other thing I wanted to mention, tomorrow night, the sheriff's office and the sheriff, you're more willing, more welcome to come up and say a few words about this, but the Citizens Academy that the sheriff's been putting on, you'll have a ceremony for the 12 citizens that are graduating, 5:30 tonight at the sheriff's office on Yuba Street. So the board's more than welcome to attend that ceremony as well.
I'll be there.
Be there, okay. And then finally, the Yuba County Strategic Plan, I just wanted to put it on the board's radar. The second meeting in January, we'll be looking to schedule a workshop. It'll probably be in the afternoon of that particular board meeting day so that we can check in with the board on how we're doing with the priorities that were set for this fiscal year. And then, and this is something, is really have a conversation about the priorities the board wants to set for the coming fiscal year so that we have those in mind before the departments begin preparation of their budgets for the coming fiscal year.
Just one item is a lot of positive comments from different people in different counties about the strategic planning. We laid it out pretty good for a small county.
And we got it, we're on top of things, we're trying to be. So, and that's about it. So we have one more board meeting before we end the calendar year, and, oh, holiday sweater Wednesdays begin tomorrow, as an FYI. So if you're in any county buildings on Wednesdays through the end of the year, you may see some holiday sweater, a little holiday cheer. All right, thanks.
Just one other thing, I think Don mentioned it, we're one of the fastest growing in the state, and I think there's a time to separate some of the agreements that we've had with other people that, you know, we've just pretty much left in the dust. And we need to have our own specific that we control. I hope next year we go along that line. All right. Anything from the public? If nothing further, this meeting is adjourned.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumus Lake Self-Storage in Plumus Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.